The Columbus City Council meeting for August twenty first, two thousand twenty-three, for the fourth quarter in compliance with the Open Meetings Act, Nebraska Revised Statute eighty-four dash fourteen oh seven. A current copy of this act is posted in this meeting room. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Bulkeley?
Here.
Augustine Schulte?
Here.
Farr?
Here.
Freshar?
Here.
Eimer?
Here.
Jablonski?
Here.
Lopez? Roth?
Here.
Schilling?
Yes.
Mayor Bulkeley, the roll has been called.
Thank you, Mrs. Council President.
Our Father, thank you for the opportunity to serve our fellow citizens. Please give us your wisdom and guidance to make the proper decisions entrusted to this governmental body. Allow our conduct to show respect, honor, and courtesy to each other as well as to all our citizens. Amen.
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose bright stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say does the star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation on the ground, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. I will welcome everyone for tonight's council meeting. If at any time during our meeting this evening anyone in our audience would like to come forward and address any item on our agenda, you'd be welcome to, and we'd ask you to come forward and give your name, your address, and we'd ask that you keep any comments within five minutes or less. With that, we'll move on to the consent agenda.
Item four, consent agenda. The following items are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a city council member or citizen so requests. In which event the item will be removed from consent status and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Item four A, minutes of the August seventh, two thousand twenty-three city council meeting. Item four B, minutes of the August seventh, two thousand twenty-three Community Development Agency meeting. Item four C, quote from Oberst and Company Incorporated in the amount of thirty-nine thousand nine hundred and fifty-five dollars for storm sewer cleaning. Item four D, resolution number R two three dash eight eight, approving a permanent drainage easement agreement with Aaron J. and Jamie M. Putney. Item four E, resolution number RB three dash one zero eight, approving an agreement with Martin Howard M.D. for reappointment as the medical director. Item four F, resolution number R two three dash one zero nine, authorizing application to the Nebraska Gammon Parks Commission for the Land and Water Conservation Fund grant in the amount of seven, one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for a splash pad at Centennial Park. Item four G, resolution number R two three dash one one zero, authorizing payment of various improvement product projects. Item four H, finance department reports. And item four I, payroll and bills not filed. Mister Mayor and council members, is there anything you would like removed from consent status?
Yes, please. I'd like item four F removed from consent and put in its normal, normal agenda order.
Is there any other items? Mister Mayor, I move that the items of the consent agenda, with the exception of number four F, be approved as presented.
Second. We have a motion in the second to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes. Brings us up to public hearings, which we're going to continue.
Item, right, item seven A, public hearing, application of James Ferguson for final plot of Deerfield Park Townhouse, second subdivision, Thirty-Eighth Street East of Twenty-Sixth Avenue. The applicant has requested this public hearing be continued to the September meeting. It's just continued from the July seventeenth meeting.
So we need a motion to continue? Is that what we need?
Yes.
So moved?
Second.
We have a motion in the second to continue this to the September meeting. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes. Brings us up to report of council committees.
Item ten A, Public Property Safety and Work Committee of August fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three. Item ten A one, request of Saint Ezra's Church to vacate a portion of Twentieth Street and cul-de-sac located west of Gruntler Drive.
Mister Mayor, I move for the adoption of this committee report.
Second.
We have a motion in the second to adopt this committee report. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay.
Print, did you vote?
Motion passes.
Item ten A two, request of Carol Henry to amend the unified land development ordinance relating to the number of garage sales allowed at one location per year. A recommendation was made to maintain the current regulations for garage sales.
Mister Mayor, I move for the adoption of this committee report.
Second.
We have a motion in the second to adopt this committee report. Any discussion? You might just explain what it means so people see something about garage sales, they understand what we're talking about.
Sure. So, um, garage sales are currently limited to four a year or one every couple of months. And the request from the resident was that you could have four basically all in the nice season of the year, so back-to-back, less limits on time between garage sales. And the Public Property Committee heard that request and had discussion about it and decided that they, they want to maintain the regulations as they are.
And as part of the reason for having the regulations the way they are is so that somebody doesn't basically become a store and constantly have a garage sale in a neighborhood and have neighbors wondering, well, if you're constantly doing this, why don't you just rent someplace and be a store? No?
I, I was gonna say, I thought, when I read it, I thought it was interesting. I didn't realize that we had, uh,
I didn't either.
ordinance or we had something in place about garage sales. And I would suspect there's a lot of people that don't. I know that I have seen in neighborhoods, people having a rummage sale every other week in their neighborhood. And so I think it really needs to be, it's an education piece that we need to provide to our citizens, uh, to be aware of that, so.
And we don't regulate that. We do have, um, this on the books, but we don't get involved in garage sales unless we call it, or bring them in. And that's usually related to parking.
Sure.
And the biggest, the biggest thing about the park, parking, yes, so, and that's understandable. All right, uh, we have a motion in the second to accept this committee report. Seeing no other discussion, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item ten A three, the two thousand twenty-four pavement management program and priority list. The recommendation, um, from the Public Property Committee was to approve the pavement management program and priority list.
Mister Mayor, I move that this report, this committee report be adopted.
Second.
We have a motion in the second to adopt this committee report. Is there any need for further explanation? Are people comfortable? I mean, with the yearly thing that we do, it would lay out our priorities. All right, seeing no questions, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item ten A four, the two thousand twenty-four one and six-year road plan. The recommendation was made by the committee to approve the two thousand twenty-four one and six-year road plan and schedule a public hearing for September fifth at six P M.
Mister Mayor, will this committee report be adopted?
Second.
We have a motion in the second to adopt this committee report. Any further discussion regarding it? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes. Brings us up to new business.
Item thirteen A, appointment of Thomas Ratchee as a firefighter EMT, paramedic, and hazmat technician.
Council members, with your permission, the mayor would like to submit the name of Thomas Ratchee for conditional appointment to the position of firefighter, EMT, paramedic, hazmat tech, subject to successful completion of all pre-employment requirements. Per council rules, the two-week waiting period is waived for an appointment of paid firefighter. Mister Ratchee was certified for firefighter, EMT, paramedic, hazmat tech by the Simple Service Commission at their meeting held July seventeenth, two thousand twenty-three. Thomas Ratchee is a graduate of David City Public High School. He studied fire protection technology at Southeast Community College in Lincoln, Nebraska, and earned his EMT certificate from Central Community College in Columbus, Nebraska. He holds his firefighter one certification and has received extensive training in rope rescue. He is trained in heavy equipment and holds a CDL license. Mister Ratchee has been serving as a reserve firefighter, EMT, for the Columbus Fire Department since two thousand twenty-two. Thomas is currently employed as the fertilizer plant manager at Central Valley Ag in Monroe, Nebraska. Uh, we need, uh, a motion to ratify Mister, or the mayor's appointment, please, Mister Ratchee.
Move that the mayor's appointment be ratified.
Second.
We have a motion in the second to ratify this appointment. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Come on, you're gonna make him nervous. Make him wait. Motion passes. Mister Ratchee's in the audience. Would you want to come forward and say hello and introduce yourself, please?
Good evening, Thomas Ratchee. I was born and raised in Rising City. Graduated from David City High. I'm just honored and humbled to now be able to serve the city of Columbus. Really excited to learn from Chief Grace and Chief Jones, our local captain of the city of firefighters. So excited.
Awesome, welcome.
Welcome.
Very good. All right.
Item thirteen B, quotes from Hyman Fire Equipment and Danko Emergency Equipment in the total amount of fifteen thousand five hundred and seventy-nine dollars and ninety-eight cents for mounting equipment for two fire engines.
Mister Mayor, I move that the quotes from Hyman Fire Equipment and Danko Emergency Equipment for mounting equipment be accepted.
Second.
We have a motion in the second to adopt, approve the quote for fire mount, for mounting equipment for two fire engines. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item thirteen C, quote from Websterant Store in the amount of fourteen thousand one hundred and fifty-nine dollars and sixty-four cents for twelve trash receptacles at Frankfurt Square.
Mister Mayor, I move that the quote from Websterant Store in, uh, for trash receptacles be accepted.
Second.
We have a motion in the second to approve this quote from Websterant Store. Any discussion?
It's a pledge of honor.
It is, it's part of the downtown improvements.
Are these gonna be the same trash receptacles that are in front of the fireplace?
No, they're not the exact same, but they look similar. They're round and black. Way better than what we have.
So what makes them worth like?
They're, they're heavy-duty, go lots of long time.
Uh, Jean's here, she's did the research on all of them. They're higher, you know, capacity, junk can easy to empty.
They actually are forty-five gallon, um, containers too. Most of the ones that you see are wrapped thirty-three. And so they are bigger, they are heavier, they weigh about a hundred and forty pounds a piece, so they should be able to handle the rain. Um, they're front door open, which is what the parks and the street guys like to have because it's easier just to pull the bend out instead of having to lift it up if it's heavy. And, um, then it's also got the hood over the top to protect it from, so that a lot of rain doesn't fall in it and make it heavy that way too, so.
And will all twelve of them be within the park?
Yeah, there's four on the outside corner, there's four on the inside, kind of around the cannon area. And then there's gonna be two each near the picnic tables, in that picnic table area, so.
And this was something brought together by the D I V?
It's, the trash receptacles from the, the Business Improvement District has talked about the trash receptacles in all of downtown and they'll probably be spending some of their funds to do them outside of Frankfurt Square, but the city is doing them in.
Got you. Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item thirteen D, quote from Sirius in the amount of twelve thousand thirty-five dollars and sixteen cents for virtual host additional memory.
Move the quote from Sirius for virtual host additional memory be accepted?
Second.
We have a motion in the second to approve the quote from Sirius for additional memory. Uh, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. I could've made a smart aleck remark about my memory, but I decided not to do it at the appropriate time, so.
Item, item fourteen D, plan specifications, H, H D R's engineering cost estimate in the amount of three hundred and ninety-one thousand one hundred dollars and authorization to advertise for bids for the Lost Creek Parkway Sewer Extension from Sixty-third Avenue to U S Highway eighty-one. The plans and specifications are on file in the engineering department.
Mister Mayor, I move the plan specification estimate of cost and authorization to advertise for bids for Lost Creek Parkway Sewer Extension from Sixty-third Avenue to U S Highway eighty-one be approved?
Second.
We have a motion in the second to approve. Any discussion?
Yeah, what, uh, what type of sewer or what has been installed there now? I mean, there's, they've got that road dug up for a while, and I know there's, there's pipe that had been installed. I was just wondering what it was.
Are you talking about what's on the parkway, construct, that project's going right now?
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, though that's a forced main, or a lot of it's forced main, so there's a lift station at the intersection of Sixty-third Avenue and Lost Creek Parkway. And it pretty much forced mains all the way over to about Tenth Avenue and Lost Creek Parkway where the power, um, service station is. So this is a gravity line that we're talking about today. So from Sixty-third Avenue West, and then, and then south around the corner to, um, Highway eighty-one is a gravity main.
But isn't there, isn't there a line there already? I mean, isn't, didn't they install one, or is it?
In the segment we're talking about, there's no sewer line in this segment.
Oh, there's a pipe laying out there, and I was just wondering what, what that pipe was for.
Uh, Chuck, you know what the?
There's water being piped line up into the water lane. Some sewers out there, this has been installed, but this is past that Sixty-third Road that goes in front of,
Okay, okay.
Casino. It'll be west of that.
Oh, okay, I follow you. I follow you.
Okay, we have a motion in the second. Any further discussions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes. Brings us up to comments from the mayor and our city council members.
In compliance with the open meetings, I have no discussion may be held on this item.
Do we have any comments from council members this evening? The mayor has no comments this evening either, so we'll move on to resolutions.
Item fourteen A, resolution number R two three dash one one one, approving the interlocal agreement with Platte County for asphalt improvements on Thirty-third Avenue from Forty-seventh Street to Fifty-third Street.
Mister Mayor, I move resolution number R two three dash one 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 be adopted?
Second.
We have a motion in the second to adopt resolution number R two three dash one one one. Any discussion?
We gotta make that.
Is this just road work, or are we talking sewer, um, sanitary sewer, sewer, sewer also?
No, it's just plain road work, so it's milling of asphalt, construction of asphalt.
It's not gonna be any wider?
No, same width.
Okay.
And it's an interlocal with the county. I mean, we're working with the county on this, right?
Yeah, that's really the county's bid project we're tagging on as well.
Okay. All right, we have a motion in the second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item fourteen B, resolution number R two three dash one one two, approving the agreement J U O, eh, J E O, insulting the group Incorporated in amount not to exceed sixty-five thousand for the two thousand twenty-three stormwater treatment facility bank study.
Mister Mayor, move for the adoption of resolution number R two three dash one one two.
You didn't wanna try to get G E O out of there now?
Second.
We have a motion in the second. Any discussion?
Could, could we have for public?
Sure.
Explain what we're doing here, uh, Mister Bogus?
Sure, so, um, um, in general, um, as you know, every development requires some stormwater treatment facilities. You gotta treat the stormwater and detain the stormwater. So what this'll do is it'll find, um, um, public, uh, city-owned or public-owned properties that, that we can use that, um, we can use their, um, facilities or do some minor work on facilities to make that, um, to be. So, long story short, what it would hopefully do is if there's a development in an area of town, instead of having those, those smaller stormwater treatment, um, areas that you see around the facilities, you know, some, some are unsightly and not kept up very well. The idea is we create a bank that the developer could buy into. So instead of using, instead of having it out on their property out there, it'd be this bank system that we would develop that'd be on state property that they would pay and buy into, so they would not have to have a facility out of their development. And of course, that also, what that does is we're, you know, might be taking up a lot or two out there. This would be another block or two that we could, um, build a residence on or some other, um, sort of facility on. So it's really buying into a bank.
I do. Where does this go? I mean, where?
Well, that's what studies do, they're gonna find locations around town that we can do that or do some minor work that, that we can use our existing facilities or just little work on them to make us get that.
Run a pipeline to a drainage system.
Uh, when that's a bit of a pipeline, it'd be more like an open, like a flat ditch or an open area or something. We already have, but we just need to maybe utilize a little bit better.
Okay. So this study is, is to determine and identify areas that could possibly help us in the future with.
That's correct, and then, um, you know, next year's budget, hopefully we'll find something that we can do some work on and get it doing really fast.
All right, any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item fourteen C, resolution number R two three dash one one three, amending the Columbus Municipal Airport rules and regulations.
I motion that resolution number R two three one one three be adopted? Second.
We have a motion in the second to adopt resolution number R two three dash one one three. Any discussion?
Yes. We just recently, after quite a lot of months, finally got the contract with our FBO signed. Is he aware of all of this and on board with it?
Uh, yes, he's aware. Uh, we were supposed to have a,
Identify your source.
What?
Need to verify your.
Oh, my name is Rossie Volz, airport manager, sorry. Uh, he is aware of it, they are aware of it. Uh, we were supposed to have an airport board meeting this last month, which got canceled. Uh, and we needed to move forward these to reflect the new contract. Uh, so we emailed them all of the board members, the proposed changes, and asked for feedback individually. And, uh, took their feedback, uh, of the three board members, and we, or excuse me, had to file, and they threw responded. And it was a hundred percent agreement on that, so that's why we brought it forward then.
And that was there, why wasn't this included in the contract before?
Uh, because this is reflected in the new contract.
It is, it is. This is all part of what's referenced in the,
Yes, in the new one.
We're just updating.
So most, most of the changes you see in there are all just basically taken straight from the new FBO contract that we were given by and put into our rules and regs to reflect the hours of operation, holidays, insurance, everything, et cetera.
And, and no landing fees and no?
That was not in the FBO contract, but after doing research with our sister airports and other airports in the state, we came to the conclusion that it would be for our best interest to not charge ramp fees.
Okay. And he's good to follow this?
He hasn't said otherwise.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
All right, we have a motion in a second to approve these. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Oh, I'm sorry, yes, sir.
I just wanted to mention that, uh, Mister Harvard's father passed away.
I heard that today, I wasn't.
Over the weekend, yeah. I just wanted to mention that.
Yeah, sure. All right. No further discussion, is that one, one, okay, everybody voted, motion passes.
Item fourteen D, resolution number R two three dash one one four, approving the memorandum of agreement with the United States Department of Agricultural Development and Nebraska State Historical, Historic Preservation Office for implementing plans to construct a parking lot at fourteen seventy-one, Twenty-Fifth Avenue.
Mister Mayor, I move the resolution number R twenty-three dash one hundred fourteen to be adopted?
Second.
We have a motion in the second to adopt resolution number R two three dash one one four. Any discussion?
Created a little bit of excitement at the Devon's House.
Yeah, doesn't the name?
Absolutely.
And it, it's amazing how you get grant money through Department of Ag and all these other agencies, but we'll take it wherever it's available. All right, no further questions. Everybody, all in favor, vote aye, opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item fourteen E, resolution number R two three dash one one five, approving the Columbus Destination Business Guidelines to increase awareness and access to retail trade funds available through the Columbus Economic Development Plan.
Mister Mayor, we're moving the adoption of resolution number R two three dash one one five.
Second.
We have a motion in the second to adopt resolution number R two three dash one one five. Any discussion? You wanna just highlight what that is, Tara, for, for the general public, please?
Sure, sure. By state law, well, first, the voters approved, uh, Columbus, as Columbus's economic development plan of, in the general election of two thousand eighteen. And, um, at that time, they approved that anything allowed in state law, basically, we could use for Columbus's, with Columbus's economic development funds. And one of those things with limits is retail. And, um, we really haven't used economic development funds for retail, yet we constantly hear from the community that they would like to see more retail, destination businesses, entertainment, those sorts of things in town. So we've been having these discussions with the Citizens Advisory Review Committee that oversees that fund for quite some time. Um, you know, a couple of years ago, we started the work with retail strategies and downtown strategies. We've done a lot of work with them and we're continuing to work with them, and they have attracted some businesses and are working to attract more. But this is really the next step to get loan funds directly to those types of businesses. So boutiques, restaurants, entertainment venues, um, destination businesses. Um, so, and to just increase awareness. So there's some limits on how much and what types of businesses, more desirable businesses and less. So once this gets approved, we'll work with Matt and Ellie to, and Jean has been working on this to really get the word out there. Sure, sure, by state law, well, first, the voters approved, uh, Columbus, Columbus's economic development plan of, in the general election of twenty-eighteen, and, um, at that time, they approved that anything allowed in state law, basically, we could use for Columbus's, with Columbus's economic development funds, and one of those things with limits is retail, and, um, we really haven't used economic development funds for retail, yet we constantly hear from the community that they would like to see more retail, destination businesses, entertainment, those sorts of things in town, so we've been having these discussions with the Citizens Advisory Review Committee that oversees that fund for quite some time, um, you know, a couple of years ago, we started the work with retail strategies and downtown strategies, we've done a lot of work with them, and we're continuing to work with them, and they have attracted some businesses and are working to attract more, but this is really the next step to get loan funds directly to those types of businesses, so boutiques, restaurants, entertainment venues, um, destination businesses, um, so, and to just increase awareness, so there's some limits on how much and what types of businesses, more desirable businesses and less, so, once this gets approved, we'll work with Matt and Ellie to, and Jean has been working on this to really get the word out there and educate the public, and, um, like downtown, for example, um, I know a lot of people would like to see businesses downtown, but historically, businesses, um, like franchise level businesses are not really appropriate or successful in downtown, so we really need to grow our local entrepreneurs in order to have successful businesses in downtown, so we're hopeful that we can compile that downtown study information and this tool and start educating the public and get some of those businesses going in town. A perfect example of one is the axe throwing business, you know, that's out, um, across from Big Ten on the highway, that sort of business would've been really nice to have downtown, um, so maybe if there was a tool like this available when they were developing their project, maybe they would've located downtown, so just really increasing awareness and getting the funds that are already approved to be used on that type of thing, um, out there and working.
Okay, all right, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay? Motion passes, brings us up to ordinances on their first reading.
Let's keep, can we go to the, oh, the resolution that we removed from the consent agenda?
Oh, I am sorry, we now have to go to the item from the consent agenda.
Four F.
Four F, right?
That, that'll be.
Item four F, resolution number R two-three dash one-zero-nine, authorizing application to the Nebraska Game and Parks Commission for land and water, water conservation fund grant in the amount of one hundred seventy-five thousand for Splash Pad and Centennial Park.
Miss, well, we have to make.
We need a motion and a second.
Mr. Mayor, I move for the adoption of resolution number R twenty-three dash one-zero-nine. I think we need a second before we can have any discussion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve resolution R two-three dash one-zero-nine, any discussion? Councilman Roth, please.
Yes, thank you, um, I'm, as I indicated in our committee of the whole meeting, I'm very concerned about expending any monies for facilities with, in parks without a master plan at that location. Uh, I'm not, I don't know about this grant, um, is there timing involved, uh, is this something that we could or should put off until we get a master plan for Centennial Park? Uh, I, I'm quite, uh, we need to have a plan before we do things, and I put out for all to see, uh, Gerard Park, pickleball, and tennis courts. We're all ready to start construction on those facilities in a place where they are now not being built. I want the Splash Pad and the restrooms at Centennial Park to be in a location that fits an ultimate or master plan for that location. I would really like to see us spend some money getting that master plan, uh, professionally prepared and adopted, and then do what we need to do to get the restroom and the Splash Pad constructed. If there's some, something that's time-sensitive on this grant, well, I don't know that I would be opposed to it, but darn it, let's get a master plan going. My, that, we need to, we need to know where we're going before we start throwing money out here.
Was there a master plan created when we put the Splash Pad in? The, no, no, no. Okay, and with the grant, is there, you, if you get the grant, you have a timeframe to accept or deny, correct? Cause just because you get the grant doesn't mean that we have to accept it, is what I'm asking.
I believe that's correct, I believe we have, um, a certain time period between when they awarded to us in January, and then it gets accepted from the Natural Parks, um, Foundation in July to say yes or no, whether, whether or not we agree to have that plan, and then the deadline for this is September fourth, for our portion of entering.
So the application is due September fourth?
Yes.
And you don't know what limitations they'll put on us for the size of the pad, none of that is known until we qualify, is that correct?
Correct.
Cause we end up in lures where we got one that's too small.
We have five.
We have a master plan, of course?
No.
Excuse me, no, but we do have a master plan that we've worked up for Memorial State, for Ponty Park and Gerard, is that correct?
Yeah.
Because of the size and scope of those parks.
Correct.
And I believe when we put that together, part of, part of the thought process, maybe I'm wrong, was, was that our, our smaller community, you know, neighborhood parks would be developed by our thought process, our decision-making process, uh, I mean, that's, I believe how this was put together in that regard, I know, I know the Centennial Splash Pad came kinda to the top of the, the needs or the wants list because of the, hey, everything's going north in town and not south, so I mean, I think that part has been part of it, and, and how many, how many neighborhood parks do we have, I mean?
We have nineteen parks altogether, and then thirteen of those parks are considered playground parks.
Where, where does Centennial Park fit in that scheme?
It's minus thirteen, when, that's part of like a.
Centennial Park is a neighborhood playground park?
Considered a neighborhood park, yes.
I disagree with that designation.
So are we not able to put together a plan while we're still, we apply for the grant, put together our plan, we get the grant or we don't, uh, plan to be in place?
Generally, master plans take, well, for example, the Gerard Park and Ponty Park, we've been working on that for about nine, ten months, um, and it's just getting finalized, will be finalized hopefully in September, and it takes funds to do that, which we don't have money allocated to do a master plan of Centennial Park. Generally, um, I do agree that if, uh, small, the smaller park systems, um, don't need as much planning as the major parks do, I, I mean, if, if everything was perfect in the world, we'd have a master plan for everything, but those things take considerable effort and financial commitments, and I don't think every, um, park needs that level of detail for planning, the real, really the reason this came forward is because Glor Park Splash Pad is very popular, there was lots of feedback about that they'd like to see it bigger, they'd like to see one on the south side, um, Centennial Park seemed like a, seems like a natural fit, especially if we can get grant funds, um, so that's really why it was moved forward, if, if money was no object, of course, we would master plan everything, but it is, and, and time to do all those things, so I guess that's why I, I would suggest we move forward with this, um, grant application at the very least, and maybe we can call Confluence and say, how much would it cost to take a quick look at Centennial and make sure we're putting this in the right spot? You know, for, this is how we can not do a full-scale master plan. Would that be?
We need to have a professionally-prepared master plan, and maybe our city engineer could do that, uh.
Are you a planner or anything?
I, I, I.
Yeah, well.
Well, I, I, and I, and I understand that, but I think the other thing we wanna keep in mind is that we, we would then need to allocate budget money to have a plan.
Absolutely, yes.
Councilman?
I, uh, met with the Norfolk, uh, not the council, but same individual that's got the same, he's the partner rec director up there, they're putting in a large Splash Pad, and he's using a company, and it's, and it's something I hadn't heard of, but they use it up there all the time, uh, they use it when they put in their, their field turf, it's called Source Wells. And what they do, they come in and they design the whole program for you, doesn't cost you anything, it's kind of a design-build type program, and that's, that's what they're using, and I think this something would fit into, in fact, I was gonna come to you this week sometime and talk to you about it, cause I got the information, and, and I think it's something that we need to take a look at, and, and if we can use them, uh, and they're out of Nebraska, uh, the problem, not really a problem, but something that we have to do is we have to join their organization, which Norfolk has done it and other, other people, this gentleman came from South Dakota, and he brought it with him to, to, to Norfolk, and they're using it, so, uh, you know, that's something I think we need to take a look at.
Well, a, a couple of things I would say, I mean, applying for the grant would be something that would just allow us to try for opportune money, you know, um, to, to, to move forward from that opportune money would take a council vote, so I would ask that possibly we allow that to keep moving, uh, and now, I, I know this is just talking about that, but in relationship to Centennial Park, the restrooms are also part of what's in the budget, you know, that, that we're looking at this year, and if, any of you have been in Centennial's restroom in recent time, I don't think, if you haven't, you really shouldn't argue that we need new restrooms.
And this is something else that that company does, they do restaurant, restrooms.
So I'm, I'm not arguing with, with Councilman Roth's discussion points here, I think, I think we, we should probably keep those moving and, and try to see if there, maybe we don't do a full-fledged study, maybe we find a medium, a, a, you know, a happy medium somewhere that, that works and gives us what we're after, but I think, I think in the best interest of our community, we, we should apply for the, for the grant, and at least let that process keep itself moving, and that's really all that's in front of us right now.
Is there a timeframe associated with applying for the grant?
Yes, I would, I would have to be applying for by September fourth.
By September fourth?
Application.
Three weeks.
And then would I, would you say you would, you would hear back by the beginning of the year if approved?
Yes.
And then the money would be distributed in July?
Yes, in fall of next year, cause it's money that's allocated to the rest of the parks through the Natural Parks Services and so they, they have to go through their processes.
And anytime from, I mean, I have a background in grants, anytime you can say I don't accept, even if you have been allotted those dollars?
Any other comments or questions? So we have a motion and a second to adopt resolution R two-three dash one-zero-nine. Without any further comments or questions, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay? Motion passes. Brings us up to ordinances on their first reading.
Item fifteen A, ordinance number two-three dash one-one, vacating a portion of Twentieth Street and the cul-de-sac located west of Rector Drive.
Mr. Mayor, move the rules be suspended in ordinance number two-three dash one-one, be read by number only. Second.
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and read ordinance number two-three dash one-one by number only, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay? Motion passes.
Ordinance number two-three dash one-one.
Mr. Mayor, move for the adoption of ordinance number two-three dash one-one.
We have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance number two-three dash one-one, any discussion? I see the house on the corner is jacked up on, on wheels and ready to go as soon as they coordinate things, that'd be good. All right, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay, did they, oh?
No, no.
No, all. Motion passes. Brings us up to ordinances on their third reading.
Item seventeen A, ordinance number two-three dash zero-nine, adopting the Columbus Land Development Ordinance.
Mr. Mayor, I move ordinance number two-three dash zero-nine be adopted.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance number two-three dash zero-nine, any discussion? Would you like to just give a brief comment for adopting this, please?
A number of items updated in the Land Development Ordinance, a lot of cleanup items, um, we discussed them at length at the Planning Commission meeting, and, uh, they've been in front of you now for six weeks, I haven't gotten any questions, so hopefully that you'll, you'll understand that, but I would answer any questions and, and, uh, move forward.
Are there any questions regarding this?
Did we need to read this ordinance by number only?
We.
Have we done that all?
Down, we read it three times.
We went down for three times, that way it goes through the entire process. We do, if I'm right, we do it by number only, if it's gonna suspend the rules, right?
Yeah.
So this is all prim and proper, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay? Motion passes, with that, I can say meeting adjourned.